Okay, we're on mute. We're everybody's.
While we're unmuting, I have a question before we start the meeting.
Well, I think we're not muted on that, though.
Yeah, unmute is that. You want me to mute that?
Sure. Ready? Thank you. All right, let's call the order, please.
I'm going to take roll call.
Please.
Dr. Asner?
Present.
Mr. Faulkner?
Here.
Ms. Goodman?
Here.
Ms. Morgan?
Here.
Ms. Petrov? Vice President Brown?
Here.
President Cuneo?
Here. All right, what we need to... We first need to flag the lead. If we can. I would ask for those on the phone, put your hands in your high. I'd like to turn to the flag right now. Thank you, everybody. And... Would someone like to make a motion to excuse Ms. Petrov?
Yes, I would. Some of...
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Are there no public comments? Is that correct, Amy?
That's correct. There's no public comments.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
That's a move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Superintendent's report.
So, we're going to have a couple reports tonight. We're going to do the first one. It's going to be by Dr. Bauer. He's going to update on the C-Step just to have the board formally see up to date with our goals over for the next year.
One last presentation before, because it is on the agenda of requesting board approval tonight. Mark, can you hear me okay? Okay. Again, this is revision for 2020, '21, next year. Next slide, please. Just a brief summary of our current C-Step. Had four goals and 26 strategies, which was big. Some of the research that I've been doing is saying that three strategies, three goals, three strategies, three action steps, which is a big difference from what we currently have. Next slide. Rationale for the revisions we made was the number of strategies. Some of the, a couple of the strategy teams were already working together because they saw some similarities between their strategies, so they were working together. We decided, let's just put them together. And also, we made progress on a lot of strategies that there wasn't a lot of reason to continue them. Next slide. Our proposed revisions, following up on that, combined some strategies where they were already collaborating. We eliminated the strategies that were largely completed. We had some strategies in the current plan that were really required business practice. There's no reason to have them in your improvement plan because you're supposed to be doing them already. Fewer strategies, a lot of greater focus on what we had. And we focused more on processes and implementation. A lot of the groundwork on establishing content had been accomplished, so we need to focus on putting that into place. Next slide. So, again, this is the model that we want to look or we want to use moving forward. We have much, a great deal of information. We take that information and we look at it and examine it and analyze it through that lens of equity. When we do that, we are able to produce our comprehensive school improvement plan. The school improvement plan leads to many improvement plans from many departments, many facets of the district. And those, again, are reviewed through the lens of equity to ensure that equity is being achieved. And that leads to student success. One way to look at it is that we want equity in opportunity, but equality in results. So, that means that every student has equity in the opportunity they are receiving, but we all want our students to achieve at the same level, which is very high achievement. Next slide. So, this is what the revision is like. Again, goal one, the goals throughout are the same. They are what the board approved previously. We are going to support implementing multi-tiered systems of support. This is an example of implementation versus process. We had three strategy teams working on the content of what the intervention figures would look like, what the interventions would look like. What we need to focus on now is implementing those interventions. One point two is an example of strategy teams that were already working together, combining that into one strategy so that they can pool their efforts to achieve it. Number three is we took, there was a strategy for safety that was listed under workforce excellence. We felt like students and teachers need to, in order to teach and learn, you need to feel safe and secure. So, we put that in there. And finally, we continued our strategy to ensure that families and educators are partners, that our parents can be equal partners in the education of their child. Next goal. Again, goal two was previously approved by the board. Combined a bunch of strategies to get to 2.1, which is implementing programs to increase retention and recruitment. That talks about diversity. That talks about compensation. That talks about what we called "grow your own" in the previous C-Step. All those things. And then, number two, the second strategy was changed a little bit based on input from the board, that we will increase our diversity percentages to match St. Louis region, state of Missouri, and the Midwest. Next slide, please. Engagement, same thing. The board had previously approved this goal. As I said previously, the strategy teams had worked on a lot of the foundational work in obtaining voice of customer. So, the next step is to use that foundational work across the district. So, that is, that's the second strategy. Strategy 3.1, there was previously a strategy under the first goal. They had to do with business partnerships. We wanted to expand that to involve the whole community and agencies, businesses, industries to increase the range of opportunities for our students. And then, finally, the equity goal, goal four, is really an implementation of that lens of equity that I've been talking about, that we want to be able to ensure that all of our processes are achieving equity, are aimed at achieving equity, that our procedures are implemented with equity in mind, that our policies are implemented with equity in mind. There are allocation of resources. There are identification of external resources. Next slide. So, talking a little bit about moving forward. We are going to move right into planning, working on our strategic plan. Again, the target has to be student performance. That's why we're here. We need to emphasize equity. Student performance, the performance of every student in the district. So, we need to emphasize opportunity. We need to emphasize outcomes. And it needs to focus on all the district departments, all the district resources, on achieving that goal of improving student performance. Next slide. So, the timetable is that during summer, fall, winter, we'll be getting input from stakeholders, from customers, and developing the strategic plan. Next slide. Be bringing it to the board in the spring, and then, from there, bring it to the governing council for approval. Next slide. Any questions? Jeff, go ahead.
I have a question about the parent stakeholders. How are you going to go about recruiting those parents?
Well, we've talked about a couple of options. First option, moving to a contract with an outside, a third party to do that. Another option, or could be an additional option. We have some parent voices already. We've got the PACs. Each district has a PAC. SSD has a PAC. Those PACs are supposed to be representing parents. Another option would be to send out some sort of widespread survey or questionnaire to all the parents in the district. So, we haven't decided which one. Maybe one, maybe all, maybe some combination. Paul, I was just going to say thank you for changing the benchmark on diversity to the Midwest, the St. Louis region, and Missouri. I think that's a much better measure to see how we're doing. Thank you for doing so. Thank you. Other questions? Thank you. Thank you.
Our next report is here on hiring and supporting individuals with disabilities, and that's going to be Chief Shaktar. Okay, thank you. Mark, a minute to get the PowerPoint loaded.
Okay. So, as Dr. Kaden indicated on speakers of war tonight, about a preliminary plan of action to begin a program of hiring and supporting individuals with disabilities here at Special School District. Next slide. Really, when we look at why we would want to do this, you know, when we look at our district mission, our visions, and our values, they're all focused on student outcomes and student success, and that goes beyond the school years. And especially, when you look at our VSP and other programs that prepare students to be successful after school, I think this is a big piece that we could take better advantage of and the gap that we can fill. So, really, what are we hoping to achieve? Well, we want to support our students and our former students who are our graduates, as well as increasing employee retention. That's a big goal of mine, human resources. And ultimately, becoming a model for the community, for other businesses and especially our community. Next slide. So, really, when looking at developing a process plan to move forward with this, some of the most important components are to develop a team that will be focused on creating and implementing this plan and getting support from our human resources department, our operational administrators, and our communications department. Once we've developed a team, it'll be important to set objectives for outcomes for what we hope to achieve and aligning those to our C-Step, as well as making sure that they're outcome-focused goals. And then, assessing the readiness of the district. And those include, really, three big components. First, a budget analysis. You know, this is not going to be something that we currently have budgeted, so it would be new expenditure, as well as site analysis to best determine where in the district would be the best place to develop our first work site and a staff survey to see how ready our staff are to work with this type of program. And then, using this information to really start to develop that plan. Next slide. When we talk about moving forward with this, the first thing that we would have to have is partnerships and really looking at our operational work sites as our first partnerships. Our central office location, our facilities and maintenance work, location distribution center, and our transportation garages. And then, also utilizing our technical high schools and working not just with work sites, but also with internships for students. And then, doing those job analysis, you know, not just looking at who'd be willing to participate, but what is the need in the department, what, doing those skills evaluations, as well as those safety assessments to determine how ready that department or work site is. Next slide? Next slide, sorry. The goal would be to, during the 2021 school year, to have a pilot program with two work site placements within the district and looking at those, that pilot program, and doing some assessment with that, making sure that we have metrics established upfront with what we want to see as far as outcomes and monitoring those, being able to work with that team that we've established to talk about our lessons learned and our recommendations for improvement before we would look at expansion into additional placement. So, this would really be doing it just in one or two places, making sure we have the system down before we roll it out district-wide. Next slide. A big component of the success in this is going to be fostering a culture of inclusion within our workforce here at Special School District, especially in our operational departments, because these are staff that, they're in classrooms, they're in school, but they don't have a lot of ongoing interaction with individuals with disabilities. So, really focusing on that marketing with that staff buy-in, making sure that all staff understand the program and what the goals of the program are. And then, training of the staff that will be in the work sites, working with individuals with disabilities to make sure that they're understanding of the expectations of the program, far as the etiquette of those interactions and those interactions. And then, having an outlet for staff feedback, which is regular feedback from the employees who will be working with individuals and supporting individuals with disabilities. Next slide. So, in order to select individuals for these positions, a few key components that we have to look at is, in our screening and hiring, we have to make sure that we make an accessible application process for all individuals, as well as develop an interview process and an interview team in order to appropriately select new employees. And then, looking at the placement and working out things like the location of the job assignment, the schedule of the individuals who are selected to work, as well as any needed accommodations that need to be provided by the district. And then, again, having a, in order to evaluate work outcomes on a regular basis and have contingency planning established in case that things aren't going as smoothly as we anticipated initially. Next slide. Big component for the employee will be a system of support. And so, looking at human resources, of course, would be a key support and working on accommodation, scheduling, training, coordination of other supports, and then, intervention as necessary. But also, having a layer of work site support. Obviously, it'll be a site supervisor who will be their daily work supervisor. But we would also need to and want to establish a job partner, someone at the work site that would be their partner to assist them with day-to-day things, as well as a district-provided mentor that could help them with things that aren't necessarily work site-related, so potentially in scheduling or, you know, appropriate interactions in the workforce. Next slide. So, in order to get this program started, we really have to look at human resources and to develop some goals, and that is looking at how many positions, again, back to that budget and site analysis, to see what's feasible, how to have the biggest impact, and then, our recruitment and retention planning around this program. And then, another component of the next step is, I've just started to look at some of the grant opportunities that may be available to the district to implement this type of program and what steps we would need to take as a district in order to apply for those grants. Next slide. Which I believe this brings us to questions.
Anyone's questions?
I got time.
So do I. You want to go first? Go right ahead. Go right ahead.
Well, first, I want to applaud our efforts to move forward with this program. I really do. So, I'm appreciative that we're trying to take steps. What I took away from this, though, is that it's almost an extension, a slightly higher extension of our VSP program. And these are, I would really like to see us provide opportunities for a high, we have so many high-functioning kids coming down, and you know why I'm going to say this, but who can do more than all the placements you described?
Yeah.
Right. So, I know we talked before about putting people in the tech group. We talked about people working in the schools and I thought...
And I think that that is a different layer of recruitment and hiring than this. I think that that is just a focus that the human resources department in the district has to have on being more open to individuals that are unique and bring unique needs to the workplace that we can offer accommodations to.
I think that needs to be a separate articulated program as well then. I really do. Because, one, the team that you're putting together, regardless of who it's for, it really shouldn't include some parents on there, because I can give you lots of examples of areas where things are missing in the process for this type that you're saying is more of a recruiting and hiring process. So, I would give you feedback as a parent if you'd be interested. Because I just really want to make sure that we have that level more, if you're saying that that's another part of your idea, that we have that documented and they put in place to make sure that we're providing for those students.
Because we pride ourselves in preparing students with disabilities for the workforce better than anyone else in the region, where we don't hire any of them.
Right.
So, that has to change.
And there are more supports that really, and there are big supports, and I wouldn't even see it having a budgetary impact, but there are just more supports that I think
Right.
would be helpful and should ensure the success of those individuals. But I would really encourage you to have parents on those, on that committee asking what they need.
We'll have you and some more parents.
Any other comments?
I'm so glad.
Go ahead, Letrice.
I was just saying, I'm so glad that the district is finally moving in this direction to, you know, actively hire people that happen to have disabilities on that scale anyway.
Yeah, I think what I would echo Jan's comment, I'd take a step further. I just want to make sure with our mission that we're being very cautious about the language we're using around being inclusive. I think there is a spectrum of what we would need to provide in terms of accommodations, but we have some extremely qualified people in the region that need more extreme accommodations than others. But I think we need to be seen as having a very inclusive workforce culture, not as having a separate program that we're doing to pilot kind of what we're able to accommodate. We need to accommodate all of that. And I would argue a lot of our sites are set up ideally to provide accommodations for folks with more extreme needs. I would also just be curious, Amy, if you could speak to or if there's any support from the board in terms of, you know, folks in the region that are partners with us already at SSD, like StarkLoft, that specializes in advising organizations on hiring those with disabilities. That might be an easy thing that we could already leverage a relationship we have with some of the employers that currently work with our students, so we, again, just appear to be more inclusive and not a separate program.
I applaud. We've only talked about this for years, that we were going to do this. This is the first time I've ever seen a timeline.
Yeah, it's amazing.
A reality. So, I thank you for that. I hate to say this in front of Rich, but I don't care right now about the budget. I care about a budget analysis, but if this costs us money, this is one thing that's worth going. At least, my view on this would, this would be one thing that I don't mind spending money on. I think we, as a district, if we're telling other people to hire people with disabilities, we need to hire people with disabilities. The other thing that I would recommend that we look at is, hopefully, have our... The other thing that I would recommend that we look at is, Hope Rehab, our nurse. I mean, they would be an excellent source here. And in fact, they may actually have training funds that they could give to us.
Well, one idea we had talked about as well is potentially adding to our district job coaches that coach our employees.
Yeah, makes perfect sense.
Right.
All right. Thank you, Chris.
I'm surprised that you stated a couple times that about buying from the staff and making sure the staff was okay. I can't imagine anyone working for Special School District and the people that we serve would have an issue with us seeking to-
I don't believe they have an issue, but they don't have the day-to-day interactions if they're working in some of our office locations. It is possible to work here in our district and never once during the year interact with a child or student with disabilities.
Be good for them.
Right. Right. And so that's more of what I'm referencing, not, you know, our work locations, not our schools.
Yeah, because we don't see the issues when they're, when you're teachers and paraprofessionals, and they're used to supporting our students. And when you said the VSP programs, absolutely, they're used to job coaching. But when you start to look at now, we're going to be bringing in adults and bringing in or students that are graduating and moving into this, that's a different level of expectations that even our foundation, the special, I mean, the foundation has talked about, how do we model this in other organizations? So that we show that it's not just hiring people, but it requires the, you know, the mentoring, requires the, not only talking about the individual who's hired, but it's making sure that the people who are working with this individual understand what it means to have a disability and to be able to support them. And it's not a, this is going to be, you know, we have to say, what are we doing to make sure that they're successful and evaluating them.
And when I mentioned the etiquette, it's the etiquette in working with them as a colleague, not as a student.
Right.
And that will be a-
I would say there are some really good corporate partners that SSD has that hire our graduates and that provide internship opportunities that maybe Casey could help extend, because there are some wonderful guidelines and expectations for employees that corporations already have. You're not, it's not a choice to be a good coworker. It's this person will be sitting next to you and you have, please help them hang up their coat in the morning. I mean, like, that's the, it's basic, I think, courtesies. And there are some wonderful resources through Starkloff. And Monsanto, I know, has a wonderful program and some team. So hopefully, you can have some partners in this, Amy, as well, at no cost to the district.
As we get things started, I will, Dr. Kinesha and I will bring, give an update to the board in the fall.
Great. Looking forward to it.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
I know. Yes.
And then that's progress.
All right. The next one is our two final, well, no, we have one more. It's the budget and it's also the April financial statements. And then we'll go into the COVID-19 updates.
All right. Here to have the final FY '21 budget approved. There have been obviously significant changes since COVID-19 came on the scene in March. And with that short introduction, the first slide mark. These are the goals that the board set back in late in nineteen, 2019. I'll just point out that the fourth goal down, engagement, the growth target, not to exceed four and a half percent. That ain't happening. It's going to be more than four and a half percent, as you'll see in a few minutes. Part of that, though, is we decreased FY '20 budget forecast for expenses by over $2 million due to the impact of COVID-19 on substitutes, transportation, and other expenses that we don't have to incur because we're going virtual. Next slide, please. The major assumptions, these are similar to what we had back in February, but the point out that that G increase in property tax revenue has been cut down to 0.3% because I'm assuming there'll be more protested taxes due to virus. There are a lot of businesses that have been closed for two months, and some of those businesses won't come back. So we're going to have, I don't know, protested taxes, and probably unpaid taxes. The big, actually, the biggest impact on the revenue from February is a 63% decrease in investment earnings due to the substantial drop in interest rates. When, that February, the rates, while the rates that we built us on were averaging about 1.5%, and right now, we're looking at 0.25%. So a very substantial decrease in the forecast of C for interest rates doesn't reflect any change in that anytime in the near future, like a year or more. And then basic fine was pretty much what we had before. Transportation revenue is another item that's lower because of a, it's still an increase, but it was a bigger increase. This is less than half of what we had in February because of that state aid cut to transportation for FY '21. They also got 20. And that's a category that could be subject to more cuts, depending on shortfalls during the year. And then everything else is pretty much the same as we had in February. Next slide, please. This next slide is kind of a bridge from February, from the preliminary budget to now. And you can see on the revenue side, it's been reduced by six and a half million. As I mentioned a minute ago, the biggest single impact is on investment earnings, declined by 2.6 million. Transportation, transportation, a cut in state aid of 1.2 million, even though we still anticipate some of the rest. And, as I said, the property tax and then the sales tax, of course, reflects the fact that retail businesses have been closed for two months. And best estimates right now are 10% to 15% reduction. A little bit conservative on that. And then on the salary side, it's pretty much as we had it back in February. Benefits, however, have gone up quite a bit driven by the increase in medical insurance. We have a budget adjustment on these end of it tonight to increase this year's insurance, medical insurance by 7 million due to a very significant increase in claims. And March was very high. In fact, it was an all-time high for prescriptions drugs. And then April dropped off, well, it dropped off because we really liked the surgeries and people weren't going to the doctors. So there's going to be some pent-up demand with CD increases as those things open up later this summer. New software, the virtual software, we went out with our RLP, for Enterprise recorded package of county and human resource software. And for the first year, we just, this assumes we do make a change. So we put $400,000 into the budget since February. And then property insurance, which just a couple of weeks ago, we got our premium adjustment for next year. This is a pretty significant increase in property insurance. In fact, it would have been higher if we stayed with the same company. But we got a later, sort of a last-minute bid that was lower than the, I think it's Safety National.
Chubb.
Chubb's the new one, yeah.
Yeah, Hartford.
Hartford, that's right. And it wasn't because of claims of SSD. It's just that on property insurance, insurance companies are raising premiums because of what's happened nationwide with hurricanes, tornadoes, et cetera. And then on, I want your attention to supplies, the PPE. We put in an order in May for $294,000. And then we added another $706,000 to the budget for next year. So a total of a million at this point. And who knows, we may need more by the time we hit fall.
Rich, do we get anything back from the county on that and the funds that they gave to COVID, to the county?
No, not that.
I was just wondering on the PPE, because I thought that that money was also-
We might get some federal funds that we can use it for that. In fact, that would, we're getting about $270,000, no, $380,000 in PERSAP funding. And, you know, we could use that to absorb. In fact, I think we did code it to the $294,000. Next slide, please. Just summarizes the revenues by the major source. You see the major decrease between '20 and '21 is in the local revenue, which is, first of all, the investment earnings decrease. And then, second of all, the sales tax drop. State revenue, we're still looking for an increase. Basic formula, we should be pretty stable on that as SSD is a whole harmless district. And any cuts that are made to the basic formula, basic, all the harmless districts will not have to participate in that reduction because of some legislation that passed about five years ago. But overall, we're looking for a decrease of 1.8 million from the FY '20 forecast. Next slide. Next slide shows the expenditures by major category. And these are pretty much in line with what we've had. The salary increases mainly, the increase in salaries is mainly salary increase and the 53.8 net new positions. Friends benefits is largely driven by medical insurance increase. We're looking at an increase of 6% for next year. We made some changes to the plan that would have kept us from incurring another 2.8%. So before we made those design changes, we would have made 2.8% increase. The purchase services, talked about some of the changes from February. And then supplies, we have a big increase. Part of that is the PPE, but it's also due to coding changes between purchase services and supplies. It's kind of a continuation for this year. And then just a 3.2% increase in capital outlay. And so the overall increase of 4.8%. And expenditures. Next slide, please. This just shows for the past two years and the current year forecast, the revenue versus expenses in first, revenues for '21 are going to be down and expenses up. So we're going to have a deficit of about $14 million. Next slide. And then this is the fund balance summary. Shows last year, when we ended the year, June 30, 2019, and the revised budget, it'll be a pretty healthy 64.2% before debt obligations. And next year, with the, even with the $14.3 million deficit, we're looking at a fund balance of 58.2%. And then looking at the fund balance net of our debt obligations. And that's all of our debt principal payments over the next several years plus the interest for next year. And that brings us down to a fund balance percent of 51.4% June 30, 2020, and 47.2% next year. And the number of months that this covers would be 7.9% based on the fiscal year and this year, and 7.2% for next year. And that assumes approximately 46 million of revenue between July and November before the property taxes kick in in a measured way. Next slide, please. And then this narrative is kind of full of points, some of the key points I just mentioned. We do have the goal of maintaining a 45% adjusted fund balance after debt obligations. And we're going to be approximately at 47.2%. And then facility plan obligations for next year, including all principles, 36 million, 677. Next slide. These are the positions. The only change from February is that we added one more teacher in the VSP program, which brings us to 14.5. And then we added two teacher assistants for the VSP program. Bring that up to 13, so total in the partner districts of VSP program of 29.5. SSD schools, we're looking at an increase of 15. Next slide, Mark. And for the early interviewing services with disproportionality, this hasn't changed. We're adding three teacher-level staff, eight and a half social workers, three school psychs, and four teacher assistants for a total of 18 and a half. Next slide. And then district-wide, we've got the Director of Equity as the director position, and then six support services, for a total of seven. And then under operations, we're adding five bus drivers and six bus monitors. We've been running short in their areas. And then two other positions for a total of 13. Next slide. And then this shows that we have a, new positions are 83, minus 29.2 positions that we're eliminating for next year for a net new position, so 53.8. Next slide, please. And then this shows the enrollment updated for the last 10 years. This is the 1920 numbers based on the December 1, 2019 data compared to Missouri. And if you look at it here, our yearly run, pretty well in line with the state of Missouri, increase or decrease. And in the last four years, it's been an increase. However, even slighter this year, though. And at the bottom, you can see that as a percent of county enrollment, our incidence rate is 16.3%. And that compares to the state incidence rate of 15%. And that's my presentation. Next slide, I think there's questions.
Rich, are we going to give this to, or not give this, are we going to present this to the governing council?
Yes.
Can I suggest one change, please?
Sure.
It's not really a change, it's an addition. On, I believe it was page nine or 10, I think it was 10, when you gave the summary. I really appreciated that you gave the 7.2 months for the percentage. I would ask you to also include that on that one slide where you give the summary. You have it on, you have it on the major slide where it talks about that. But I think, when we, yeah, when we talk to the governing council, the amount of money and the percentage is overwhelming to them.
Yeah.
I mean, they're not, they're just unusually done with that kind of a budget.
Right.
And if we would tell them the months, I think it becomes much more realistic for them. And I don't think we're out of line saying, I like the idea of having six months in reserve. 7.2 doesn't seem that much out of line to me anymore. But I would ask you, you've got to figure on the one, you put it in, I want to thank you for that.
Just put it on.
If you just put it also on that.
Okay, sure.
Are there any other expenses assumed, like installation of plexiglass barriers or things like that that you see happening?
That's part of the million dollars that's funded right now.
Yeah, plexiglass for reception areas.
And stuff like that. Okay, see how that is.
And then I was also thinking about the thermometers that, you know, much like when we came in. Do they have those on the buses?
Yeah.
Or are they in the car?
Yeah.
You know, we expect the partner district to be responsible for that.
Well, part of districts have different protocols because they're racing the days. They're over the structure of their building. And then we'll support them with PPE for the staff. And for us, we are working with our transportation about how we monitor kids coming in on the bus. What are they getting off the bus? How do we stagger the transportation? How do we stagger, you know, making sure kids are socially distancing on the bus? But they get off, they get a temperature coming in, all adults coming in, same thing. So we'll give a little bit more about in the COVID-19 update, but it's plexiglass in the front, it's the masks, it's the additional when you have students for really tight quarters with their paras or one-to-one paras and they're changing students, so, or you- students, so, or you have two people changing a child, so you're going to need acquiring additional PPE for them. So we've basically gone through every scenario that we anticipate within our structure to be able to be able to support. What would it look like for this type of a class? Or what does it look like for if you're in a speech? What does it look like if you're, um, in a hearing impairment class? You have to have a clear visual, so you have to have clear masks. So we're, we're looking at all of those pieces of it.
I would imagine those shields are much more expensive than these days.
Well, there was one with the, what did Allen say? They have like a beehive kind of.
Well, the mask with the clear panel for our students that we live, um, which are a little more expensive than our typical.
They're, they're very, yeah. Plus the other ones, if we got a clear mask, shield with a kind of like, so that we know that it's safer, um, that's, those are still pretty expensive too. The other factor here is getting everything.
Yeah.
Um, so we're in competition with, you know, I'm on Zoom calls every Wednesday with superintendents and they're all in competition to get these things. So, um, it's, it's going to be really interesting and the price is going up. Prices are going up.
And the suppliers have limits as to how many you could buy each time.
Right.
I'm curious.
So that's really what we're looking for so far is the millions. Yes, Dr. Esner.
Just, just as a comment, and you're probably aware of this, at the hospital, we have a very comprehensive policy about, uh, reusing PPE. And I'm curious if there's anything like that in development at the school as well.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at, and we've, we've been looking at the, the CDC recommendations. Um, and so, you know, we can, we'll highlight those pieces of it, but we have a draft that we're looking at the phases of different opening up and what's required. So absolutely, we're looking at all different situations about one, you know, what's it like for students? What's it like for adults? Um, just, you know, those type of things. And then what's the usage and how do we take them off and how to make sure you're appropriately disposing of them?
And also potentially, when you do take them off, taking them off in a way that you can then reuse them after some time, that's.
Right. Yep. And then, and then training staff to do that.
We're developing training to include at back-to-school time with all of our staff.
Do we have a training book then, when the kids first start using these masks? I, I mean, can we give these to the parents like a month beforehand? You know, a, a sample mask? I, I can't imagine trying to deal with a five-year-old, six-year-old, seven-year-old, I don't care if they have special needs or not, sticking a mask on and trying to convince them this is not something to play with, that, uh, that, that just the, the feedback of yourself, hearing, hearing your words different, uh, feeling your breath difference. It would seem like would be a good idea if we could get parents to get them used to wearing a mask if they have to wear one in school.
Some of the difficulties we're going to have is when students, because we have students that are, you know, that will take them off and they'll want to take other people's masks off. So.
Right.
We have to deal with those situations too, um, and how to deal with when, you know, because right now, we don't, you know, lanyards are, they're breakaway so that they don't affect anybody or anybody who's impacted, so, um, but yes, we, we, you know, it's about how do we train the staff and the, and the parents to prepare the kids to come in and what it's going to be.
I was, you know, figuring that many times attention span, uh, with, with five, six, seven-year-olds.
Yeah.
Eight-year-olds, no, my attention span is, is bad. If you stick a, if you stick a mask on, it's one more thing that's going to be distracting. And that's why I thought if you, if it could be introduced sooner than the first day they get back into school, you might make an easier adjustment. If the parents say, you know, I need you to wear this two or three a, a day, an hour a day, just at home, see what would happen. I don't know if we have that many masks to give out.
Not yet. But we've, we've ordered some pretty huge quantities.
Yeah.
Because as, as Dr. Esner was saying, you're going to have to teach kids how to take them off because they're going to contaminate them if they don't take them off right.
Well, let me, let me be clear. I, I was, uh, I, I was referring to the staff and training the staff. Um, I'm assuming the kids will not keep the masks on at all. I, I just, I, 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 uh, younger kids and kids with lower functioning, they're, they're not going to do it. Um, I, I was really moaning to the staff.
Yeah, you're, so you're saying at that age, they're, they're just not going to wear them?
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're not going to. I mean, I, I, I'll defer to you guys to figure out how to do it, but I'm not expecting any of them to do it.
I think that's probably a safe assumption, which means, makes it all the more important that we give our staff some good traits.
Yeah.
Other questions? Thank you, Rich. And our last presentation for the superintendent update is the COVID nineteen. Oh, we have the one more. I keep forgetting they were, they put it together, so, sorry. At least they're going to be presenting this one.
That's perfectly fine. Good evening, everyone. This evening, I'd just like to share with you a summary of our April financial statements. So we'll start at the beginning with an overview, an executive summary. Revenue does continue to trend above budget and is above last year by two point two percent. You've heard me say before that it's still a big item. Basic formula revenue will increase by the one-time prior year adjustment of two point one million. Expenses do continue to trend under budget and, uh, at the end of April were two and a half percent under budget compared to last year to date. Fund balance percentage at the end of the month was seventy-three point seven percent. Uh, that fund balance percentage net of facility plan obligations is fifty-nine point one percent. And that covers nine point three months of expenses, but it does include this time, um, the estimated July through November revenue of forty-six million. Next slide, please. Um, looking at the revenue side of the income statement, um, revenues are up eight point three million and two point two percent over last year through April. Prior year taxes, um, continue strong and are up more than three point one nine million from last year to date. That merchants and manufacturers surcharge, um, is still high. It, uh, is up more than one million due to the higher commercial real estate SS valuation. And investment earnings, um, you heard Rich mention interest rates. So here we are at the end of April, uh, investment earnings are now more than eight hundred thirty-four thousand, lower than last year to date with the interest rates. Basic formula is up more than two million due to the one-time prior year adjustment and, um, also due to higher weighted average daily attendance. And I can now report that Medicaid is higher than last year to date by two hundred seventy-one thousand dollars more than. Next slide, please. So this is a summary of what you just saw. And again, you'll see, um, or what we just talked about. Last year is reflected in the blue lines and this year, revenue in total, um, are the green lines, and in total were two point two-two percent more than last year to date. Next slide. So on the expense side of the income statement, um, expenses are up more than three point three million year to date, but still trending below budget. Salaries are up more than four point two million. And again, additional salary increases and staff benefits up more than one point nine million year to date, um, which is less than a two point six percent increase and still under budget. And in May, medical insurance will increase by seven million due to an increase in claims. Purchase services are up more than two point four million due to higher payments for contracted pupil transportation and the, um, Every Student Succeeds Act or those ESA coding changes that we've been talking about from supplies. And then next slide. You'll see then, on the other side, the purchase services were up and then the supplies are down by more than one point three percent. A lot of it is due to the ESA or the Every Student Succeeds Act coding changes, lower technology expense, also now due to lower fuel expenses and timing of purchases and lower utility costs are continuing. Total capital and finance costs are down more than three point nine million compared to last year to date. And again, um, due to many of the tax levy projects that were completed last year. So next slide. And this is the graph that summarizes what we had just talked about. Our overall expenses, um, through April compared to last year to date are, um, just under one percent higher, um, than they were last year to date. And next slide, we'll take a look at our expenses on a month-by-month view. You can see that, um, we had a trend going. We, we talked in December, January, and February, those monthly expenses were lower than they were last year. They, um, were a little bit higher last month, but then in April, um, our total expenditures were thirty-eight million, three ninety-seven, and whereas last year in April, they were thirty-nine million, eight eighty-nine. So that was good news. Uh, next slide, please. And wrapping up with our cash and investments, um, our cash balance at the end of April was seven point one-two-five million with outstanding investments of three hundred forty million, one hundred fifty-one thousand, one hundred eighty-six dollars, bringing our total cash and investments to three hundred forty-seven million, two hundred seventy-six thousand, eight hundred fifty-five dollars, which is down, um, almost fourteen million from the prior month. So any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, may we have a COVID nineteen update?
Yes, we may.
Get PowerPoint ready. Okay, update on COVID nineteen. Next slide, please. Want to talk a little bit about pre-ones. Now, these numbers are as of, uh, last Tuesday, when I finish this PowerPoint. So the numbers as of today, uh, state of Missouri has four thousand, six hundred eighteen cases, six hundred ninety-one deaths. I'm sorry, um, yeah, six hundred ninety-one deaths. City of St. Louis, eighteen hundred and sixty-seven cases and one hundred sixteen deaths. St. Louis County, four thousand, seven hundred sixty-six cases and, uh, three hundred eighty-seven deaths. So the numbers are continuing to increase. Next slide, please. Little background, government responses. We had the county executive's order in March, stay-at-home order, have social distancing. The governor's order ultimately went a little farther than that, uh, stay-at-home with social distancing. And the governor eventually ordered to close schools. The county executive's order didn't talk about schools, but the county superintendents had already decided to close up prior to the governor's, or at about the same time that the county executive issued his order. Next slide. SSD, you know, we started talking about this back in January when we started getting the first word of coronavirus. We were afraid that it would be another H1N1, which hit us several years ago. So we were starting to talk about how to plan for it. And even in February, we started talking about how to plan for this at the executive level. Next slide. Our concerns, uh, we were worried about the mental health of students, families, and staff. Of course, the physical well-being of our students and their families and our staff. We wanted to be able to continue quality instruction to our students and we wanted to be able to continue operations and also the resources to support those things. We were concerned about the effects of the, uh, county executive order, the governor's order, and, and just the COVID nineteen pandemic, the effects on families and students and staff. Next slide. So, uh, our response, we closed all of our buildings and sites. We continued district operations and the decision was to continue paying staff. We continued, decided to continue services to students and families. It's important, schools closed, but SSD did not close. That's an important way to look at it. Our buildings, our schools, our sites closed, but the district kept going. And we, through various avenues, kept our staff and our families informed. We wrote several FAQs about different topics. We sent memos out, the website had latest news, uh, we used our internet for, uh, communication within the district, Facebook, all those avenues to try to keep everybody posted on, uh, up, with up-to-date information. Next slide. The guidance that we got from the U.S. Department of Education was, uh, believe it or not, a little bit vague. But that's better than the guidance that we got from DESI because we got almost nothing from them. What the U.S. Department of Education said was that if possible, continue implementing IEPs. If possible, hold your IEP meetings. If possible, do your evaluations.
Does that define what is possible, Matt?
Yes, as a matter of fact. Uh, for example, with evaluations, they said that if you, if the assessment you are administering requires being face-to-face, then it's not possible to complete that assessment remotely.
Okay.
IEP meetings, even though you could do them remotely, you still had to have all the required parties in attendance. At the same time, they said if possible, do it. They did not, uh, give any, any leniency on timelines. So even if you were unable to complete an evaluation, you were still out of compliance. And, uh, we wanted to continue, so we directed our staff to do those things, to if possible, have IEP meetings that were due, if possible, complete evaluations and initials and evals. And, uh, this was the way, not if possible, this was a directive to do it, continue instructing the students. Next slide. We developed a distance learning plan, uh, which was electronic. It, uh, was based on students' IEP goals, uh, and it provided what the term was proportionate services. So if a student was receiving, say, three hundred minutes a week of services when school was open, during the closure, they would receive fifteen minutes or ten minutes, uh, so that we could continue some services. And we were successful with that. As you see, eighty-nine percent of our students have a distance learning plan. And that would be higher, except that includes transfer students and pending students, many of whom our teachers have never seen before. So you can't write a learning plan if you've never seen the student. We had, uh, we had electronic consent that we sent to parents to address any issues about their child participating in any online activities with their teacher. Sixty-two percent of parents provided that electronic consent. The percentage of parents that did provide some consent was actually higher than that because some of them, uh, did it through their partner district, some did it in writing, some did it through some verbal permission. So we're actually higher, we only actually had two point six percent of parents that requ, that declined, uh, having the child instructed online. Next slide. So, uh, altogether, we had about twenty-one thousand students had a distance learning plan. Of those distance learning plans, again, about four thousand of the students had their plan uploaded into some system that the partner district was using. And a little under seventeen thousand were using the system that we developed. So this means that we have good documentation of So, this means that we have good documentation of what services were provided, when they were provided, how much they were provided, and what they addressed. Next slide. Which would put us in good stead if we have any individuals who feel like we didn't provide services to their child, who didn't feel that we provided compliant services to their child. We can document that we did those things. So, moving forward, we need to start planning about what's going to happen. So, we have developed reentry plans for each one of our schools, for each one of our sites, warehouses, our distribution center, garages, schools. We recognize that those probably will change before we actually get to reopening. But we have a good plan in place for each site that complies with the guidance from the Centers for Disease Control. We're looking at a phased reopening. We're looking at starting to reopen central office with a limited number of staff and gradually build from there. Recognizing all along that if there would be a new wave of cases or some changing guidance from CDC or the Health Department, we would adjust our plans accordingly.
And when does that begin, Paul, the phased reopening?
We are going to start the first phase on June 15th for central office and the learning center. And the first phase will be people who have a door on their office plus their secretary or admin assistant. We'll continue that for about two weeks. And then we're going to ask each of those people to identify one or two people additional in their department. We will come in on a staggered schedule on the Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday. And then with time, as we phase in, we will add more people. We will be staggering work schedules. So, staff will be working Monday, Wednesday, or Tuesday, Thursday with alternating Fridays. We will be staggering start times, 8:00, 8:15, 8:30. We have some staff who come in at 7:30. We'll encourage that to continue. What that will help address is having lines at the front door because our plan is to limit entrance to the building. Everyone will have their temperature checked before they enter the building. So, if we can divide the number of people working into three or four. First, we divide it in half by staggering days. Then we divide that half by three or four by staggering the start times. It should help limit the number of people who are waiting in line. We're also directing staff, wait in your car till your start time. Our staff like a lot to hang out by the front door until 8:00, which is okay under normal circumstances. Also, it also directs them that when they leave to go directly to their car. No mingling on the parking lot. We are going to be closing down central office and the learning center at 3:30 every day. This will allow Clean Tech additional time to clean and disinfect after us. We are going to, so that's what our reopening of central office and learning center is going to look like. We have walked through and identified staff who will have the staggered schedule and will allow that the department head some flexibility. I'd really like it if someone was here on Mondays, so this person will come in on Monday and switch with this person, so that sort of thing. We also, forgot what my thoughts were for that. We, so that's all we have for central office and the learning center. As far as our schools, we will start ESY remotely on June 8. And partner districts, we are kind of beholden to whatever their schedules are.
Paul, when we're starting our schools on June 8, please talk about this briefly before this meeting started. Is there a way that we could get, since it's going to be remote or virtual, is there a way that we can get a one- or two-page? I know that there's a video to help people prepare. Parents aren't going to look at a video very few times. But if we could send them a page or two that tells them how to prepare their kids to go on to Zoom, it would be real good. And if we would get this, get input from the teachers that have done it so far, like, why should a child wear, shouldn't he be fed beforehand? Make sure the bathrooms are there. Oh, I mean, just some real basics that we could send out to parents. And I think that'd be real helpful. And I know this, it's a short timeline, but it would be nice to have it out by June 8 so that everybody could be prepared.
I think we could do that.
I mean, I'm only thinking like a page.
Yeah, yeah.
Just something they could stick on a refrigerator and say, okay, or on top of the computer, this is what I got to do before we start.
I think, I think that's a good idea. We'll do that.
And also create it like a social stories for, for some, you know, others.
Next slide, please. So, I've already talked about central office and the learning center. We're going to follow the same, we follow the same process of learning center, starting with people who have doors on their offices. A lot of people at the learning center work 10 months. I'm sorry.
They don't have doors.
We have very few people there with doors, but we'll start with them. A lot of their people work 10 months, so it's really going to be a big issue until later in the summer. And we have Kevin Anderson, who works with Clean Tech. We've been emailing back and forth about some improved disinfecting chemicals. So, we'll be purchasing those. They're safe. We're going to get material safety data sheets on those. And we'll be purchasing those to use those. I did not say anything about transportation. Transportation has a reentry plan too for staff and for students. Students will get their temperatures checked before they get on the bus. We will try to space students on buses, but that is not always going to be possible because of the number of students on a bus. But as far as arrivals and departures at schools, we're going to have, one of the things we're looking at is having buses dismiss at different locations in front of the school so that this, right now, the bus is let off and you got this huge mob of kids coming in. We can disperse that a little bit. And then we're going to do load and go in the afternoon, which means as soon as the bus gets there, the students who are on that bus leave and get on the bus and the bus leaves. Same thing, help to disperse the students and help to minimize the contact among students as much as we can.
Are we going to clean the buses after the kids get off?
Going to be disinfecting buses, yes. Next slide, please. Our principals are going to report. We have, through the summer, we have had a process for individual staff members to access their classrooms if they needed to. That included contacting the principals, contacting John Mueller, getting it approved, doing a self-screening and a temperature check before they entered the school. Also, to limit their, the amount of time they spent in the school and the places they went to. Essentially, go to your room, get your stuff, and leave, and don't hang out. So, the Clean Tech could clean up after them. So, we are going to have our principals report. We will work on increasing staff access to their schools in the same way. That's part of their reentry plan. And we will continue the cleaning and sanitizing with Clean Tech. Next slide. And then, one of the things that we really need to do is, since we've never done anything like this before, we need to do a debrief in July. Let's see what lessons we learned. Let's see what things we did really well, let's see what things did not go so well. And we will get input from various stakeholders, as you see on the PowerPoint. And we don't know if there's going to be another wave, if there's going to be another huge pandemic, what it's going to be. So, we got a plan for this happening again. And hopefully, it never will happen again, but we need to use what we learned from doing it this time to be ready.
And July will be the time we will announce what it'll look like at the beginning of the school year. We say that because most of the superintendents in the, in the partner districts, or the 22 districts in the county, are saying we don't know what it's going to look like in a month. So, you know, we're holding off that we will plan on what the face-to-face, in-person or virtual at the beginning of the year, what that will look like. But we'll be, hopefully, we'll be able to announce that by mid-July.
One, one partner district that's already announced that they're probably going to be virtual, which in the fall, Wester Grove.
And that was the one district they said. That one always does their own stuff.
Paul, on, and I should note this. We, on the policies, do we have a subsection on disaster planning?
We have one on the PPE.
We have one on PPE. I, I don't know whether we do or not.
The reason why I'm saying that is this, this might be a once-in-a-lifetime thing, but it may not be. It would be nice to take the plan for future closures, to put it as a leg somewhere or to represent somewhere because it would be nice to have it, to come back and see all we learned from this and learn from our mistakes and not have to start over again.
We have tried to put an incident command structure into place. And we made real good progress on getting that into place. And we had, the incident command is based on who your executive leadership is, filling roles and that, since we had the change, that needs to be revised. But that would satisfy the disaster as it is happening. I think what you're talking about is more in the recovery aspect.
Correct.
So, you know that.
Yeah, I just wanted to have this memorialized so that if something like this happens again, we could say, oh, yeah, maybe 20 years down the road, somebody says, well, you know, we had something like that before, and this is what we did.
It turns out that what we, we had to do a lot of things when the H1N1 pandemic occurred, but none of it really applied here.
Yeah, this is really stupid.
Next slide.
So, I had a quick question. You mentioned one of the school districts has already announced that they're going to be doing distance learning in the fall. Which school district is that?
Well, I think they've announced that they're probably going to, and that's Wester Grove. Then, moving forward, we, we just need to evaluate the whole thing. We need to evaluate our response. We need to evaluate the distance learning process, how well that really did continue instruction for students. Level of parent engagement and student engagement. We had some technology issues. How did we address those? Did we do that sufficiently? How did we communicate with all of our stakeholders? And how did we continue to comply with requirements? And those things all would influence our plan in the future. Next slide. So, as we get into the next year, these are the questions we got to start talking about. Are we going to do virtual instruction? Are we going to do face-to-face instruction? Is it going to be for all of our students? Or are we going to limit, for some reason, some groups of students? If we open schools, are we going to expect our students with serious health concerns to come to school? Are we going to do something different for them? Are we going to, if we have students who we know will not respond well to masks and precautions and therefore place themselves and others at risk, are we, will we respond to those students in a different way than we respond to other students? So, those are all the kinds of questions that we have to answer before we reopen schools. And I think there are some questions we don't even know about yet. Next slide. And I've already talked about some of this. If we do it, if we have students come to school, how are we going to do transportation? How are we going to screen students and staff every day? How are we going to do breakfast and lunch? They can't all eat in the cafeteria. How are we going to handle PPE for our students and our staff? How are we going to clean, have Clean Tech clean and sanitize our schools on a regular basis? Next slide. So, with all those questions, do you have any questions?
When do you think we'll get answers to our questions, to your questions that were posed?
That's, I think that will all be part of the debrief and the planning that starts in July. Because that way, we will have ESY as a data source also.
Thank you.
I shouldn't say we, I should say the district. I'm not going to be here in July.
June 30th officially, right? Not to talk about it.
You already did.
He did.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All righty, moving right along. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the consensual items? I don't move. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. My eyes are bad here. Action item, am I on? 701, physician modifications, student service diagnostics. When someone moved to approve.
Don't move.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
I'm sorry, is there going to be any discussion of this one?
Discussion, I'm sorry, the discussion. Who is, is Dr. Anderson that chairs?
Yeah, I just, I, this is item seven.
Yes.
Yeah, I just had a question about what the differences might be in those roles for the, I guess these are the psychological examiners as opposed to the psychologists. In other words, what role would they be filling and what would their duties be?
They would have the same duty. The school psych examiner has a certificate that some individuals still hold, but DESI changed the certification requirement to school psychologist. So, newer individuals have to complete a different program in order to earn that certificate. But the job duties would be the same for the two categories. Just we can't call individuals with a school psych examiner certificate a school psychologist because of the DESI guidelines. There would be no change in job duties and there would be, they're both considered teacher-level positions. So, they would both be paid on a teacher's salary schedule.
I guess my question was, are there, at least when I think of school psychologists, I think of them as, one of the things they can do is also help with behavior plans and assessments. And I was curious if this is something that the examiners are trained to do as well, and if that would be part of their duties.
Yes, that is something that if they didn't, that they would have the same training that are school psychologists and that they would have the same duties.
Jan, I had.
Yeah, so there'd be no discrimination of pay between the two? Is the one is certified and one is not?
They're both certified, it's just a different certificate. It's similar to when guidelines were changed, like for a physical therapist used to not have to have a doctorate degree, and now they do. So, the physical therapist who got licensed prior to that can still practice as a physical therapist. This is the same situation. It's just they're referred to as school psych examiners because at the time, the requirements from DESI were different.
This sounds like the way, this is red, that you're lowering the qualifications because you didn't have enough to, you need to modify, and it's okay.
Well, so we would have to call these physician-controlled numbers psych examiners because when we report them to DESI, they have to be able Because when we report them to DESI, they have to be reported as psych examiners because that's the certificate they will have.
I apologize, I'm, I'm, go on, I'm sorry, Dr. Anderson, go on.
That's okay, I, I just want to clarify because my concern, and it may be unfounded, is that, part of this is maybe I'm not fully familiar with what it's, psychological examiners, what, what sort of training they've had, but it's my understanding that these are folks maybe with a master's degree who might not have as much experience or training in terms of designing, for example, a full behavioral intervention plan or, or doing the assessment. Again, I, this is some, this may be an area of ignorance on my part, but that's the question that I have is, are, are we then, like, a, as Ms. Goodman said, lowering the requirement to have somebody who may not have this equivalent training?
No. The, the training aspects are really the, the, the school psych examiners did not have to have an educational specialist degree in order to get their certificate at the time. Now DESI requires that school psychologists obtain an educational specialist degree in school psychology in order to meet those certification requirements. So as far as the, the ability to do the evaluations, prepare the summary reports, to offer recommendations and to assist with the implementation of planning, are duties that both psych examiners and psychologists are capable of doing.
I think, I think a key is the role that the district has for, for these staff. They primarily do testing. And they do some consulting on behavior plans, preventions, that sort of thing, but that's not primarily their role. And I think that the psych examiners can be trained to implement that part of the role.
Do, do we, psychologists who are available to help both administer and interpret some of the more challenge? In other words, there are some kids who have very complex presentations where they, they might need somebody, again, at a psych, and, and again, this may be misunderstanding my part, but a doctoral level psychologist who helps with interpretation of some of those psychological examinations, is that something that we have available? And would they be even available? Am I making a complete situation right?
We, we can access UMSO for psychological evaluations. And we also have an agreement with Washington U for psychiatric consults for those students who are experiencing greatest need.
Okay.
It's not the way it was worded in the executive summary, it sounded like a downgrade because there's not a large enough pool of candidates for what we really wanted, so that we were willing to.
No, it's just opening up to more individuals to be considered by having a certificate that's different than what currently our school psychologists have.
All right, before we approve all the other items, I had questions that I forgot to give to Amy. But I did get to Dr. Keenan on two items. On that right to refuse, I wanted to know on 6.08.
May we approve this first?
Yes, we can approve this. All in favor for approving the physician modifications for student services diagnostics?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. I have questions on that, on 6.08, on the right to refuse settlement. I wanted to know on our insurance, did we look at the possibility of a right to refuse settlement? Where they, they didn't have to force it upon us?
We'll, we'll get back to you on that question.
Okay.
Yep.
The other one that I had was on 6.14, 6.15, 6.16. Especially 6.14, when we were talking about the ESY at Giant Steps.
Yeah.
Tell me that if this is online, we're not going to be paying that figure for an online one hour a week.
I'm not sure what their program is going to look like. We'll have to find out.
Can we make our, our payment or condition contingent that that's what we are paying if they go? If not, we will renegotiate a fee.
I don't know.
Then I can't vote to approve it because otherwise we would be paying $6,200 for 30, for 28 days for 28 hours of Zoom. 28 hours of Zoom, we're going to end up paying $6,200? That's goofy.
I'm not sure what their summer program looks like.
Rich isn't.
Yeah, I agree.
We'll have, look and see what their program is.
Okay. But I, I think I'd like that pulled till we find out what their program is. You know, any, on any of the ESYs, it is ludicrous for us to pay full price if they are there. If it's there, I agree, we should pass it.
So they, they haven't decided yet what methodology they're going to utilize.
If it is not a methodology where the students aren't there, I don't think we should pay it that figure.
So once, we'll talk about it, until we find the methodology, then we'll renegotiate.
I, I would recommend that we pull these until we find out the methodology they're planning on doing. And then we would revise our, our, our payment schedule to be dependent upon the hours that are invested and the methodology they're using.
Yeah, we'll work with that.
Do we technically already approve that though, because it wasn't pulled off the consensus?
Then I would ask that it be reconsidered.
So would I make a motion to reconsider the ESY Giant Step contract for?
Well, all, all of the ESY contracts for the PLOSs. I think unless we know they're there, we don't know what services they are. If it is the service where they're going to be there the, the entire time and program's going to be there, I agree. You know, I would vote yes. But if in fact, they have a revision of the program, the program's going to be online and it would be less than the 20 hours a week that they're there. I think we need a revision, I'm not saying don't do it, but I'm saying I need, we need a revision of the salary schedule.
So Dr. Keenan, can I just clarify? So for the ESY Giant Step contract and all of the purchase of services?
Right, 6.14, 6.15, 6.16. Until we get a clarification.
I think you have 6.13.
6.13. Okay, 6.13.
Yep, 14 and 15.
14 and 15. Until we get a clarification, the autism one is outrageously expensive. And, and I understand if we're, we're having the children there. But if the student's not there.
If it's a virtual.
Yeah, I, I mean.
So a couple of those other ones have regular school years well in ESY, but we would just table?
I, I want to, I want to table ESY. I would want to table it all until I find out what they're doing.
Okay.
And I think they need to show us their programming, if in fact, they're not having actual programming there before we would approve it.
Okay, we can find out what everybody's doing, so.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean.
We have time with those contracts, we brought them early, so.
Yeah, well, Giant Steps is expensive, but the Center for Autism Education is extremely expensive. Isn't that over 100 grand a year per kid?
Yep.
And if that's going to be, first of all, I don't know how you would do that online when a child would be that difficult to deal with, uh, difficult to manage. But to pay 100 grand for an hour a week Zoom is rather bizarre figure.
Did we have a motion in second?
So I'd like to move that we table items 6.13, 14 and 15.
Further information. Is there a second on that, please, yet? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
All.
All, all. Motion carries. Thank you, sorry.
Thank you, Dean.
All right. Okay, would someone like to make a motion for a closed meeting of the Board of Education on June 9th and June 23rd?
Don't move. Second.
I need a roll call on this one.
Dr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Foxer?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
And President Keenan?
Yes. Someone make a, a motion approval of minutes or approval of the amendments of our past meeting? I have the dates, but I don't, can't read it, it's too small for me here.
April 28th and May 12th.
May, April 28th and May 12th. Would someone make that motion?
Don't move.
Is there a second? Need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Uh, T, uh, in action items, do you have it? See it there. My eyes are outrageously bad. Go over on yours? I'll read it from there. All right, the following items were approved in tonight's executive meeting. Employment, resignations, retirement, salary adjustments, extra duty pay and vacancy data. Two, reemployment of math planning and staff for the 2020-2021 school year. Three, employment of extended school year ESY staff, summer 2000. Four, non-paid leaves of absences. Five, termination of employment. Six, non-renewal professional staff for the 2021 school year. Seven, reduction in force of support personnel. And finally, one settlement agreement. Thank you. The board's request and response to request, please. Do we have any requests?
It says the one that you were asking.
All right, great. Please, okay, I have, okay, these are the ones, oh, these are the ones that you sent, that's fine.
Yeah.
All right. Board communications, I, can I start with this? Yeah. Paul, thank you. Thank you for staying on, thank you for staying with us.
You're welcome.
Don't, seriously, don't be a stranger.
I won't be. It's been a fun year.
Has it?
Thank you. You helped us get through this.
Thanks.
And thank you for all you did, and I'm sure we all would, all feel the same. Board of communication, anyone else I wanted to say that? All right, Board of Counter-Revenge, everybody can see. Now the most important part, motion for adjourn?
Second.
Anyone?
Move to adjourn.
All right.
We already have it.
Second, good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
All opposed? Not a one. Motion carries unanimously. Everybody be safe.
Thank you, Chris McFion. Thanks, everybody.
Hi, everyone.